Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular session City Council meeting this Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. Before I call the meeting to order, we're going to ask that Tim Rose from First Priority come up and give us our invocation for the evening.
Sir, let's pray. Lord, we come before you, and God, we are grateful. We're grateful for the time of year that we get to celebrate your birth. God, we do want to lift up to you each and every member of our community who's not as fortunate, God. We pray that right now they'd be kept warm and well-fed, and that, Lord, that you would bring blessings upon them this Christmas season. Lord, we do thank you for the ability to meet and to talk about our wonderful sitting. Pray for wisdom for each one of these in front of me and those who will come up and speak throughout the evening. And, Lord, at the end of the day, we want to give you all the glory and all the praise because you came and you lived on earth and you died on a cross for our sins. And, God, we get to celebrate you now because you're not just on the cross, but you're our risen King. Jesus, we love you, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tim. With that, it is now 6:00 even, and I will call this meeting to order and announce that we do have a quorum. Let the record reflect that Place 3, Matt Tiscus, was not able to join us this evening, along with Honorable Mayor Paul Pashko. Item number 3 on the agenda, pledges allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags, will be led by Councilwoman Heidi Wilder.
Please join me for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Heidi. With that, we'll invite Erin Spicer up for items of community interest.
Mayor Pro-Tim and council, just a few quick highlights from around town. It's the most wonderful time of the year, mainly because we can finally wear those Christmas sweaters without breaking into a sweat. The cold front has arrived, and so has Weatherford's holiday spirit. Pathway of Lights is now glowing nightly through December 31st. Take a stroll through Heritage Park and bask in the thousands of twinkling lights, festive displays, and our 54-foot Norwegian spruce, who is frankly outdressing all of us this season. It's free, magical, and the perfect excuse to take a million photos with your family. Dress up, stroll downtown, and celebrate the season for a cause. The Santa Stroll on December 4th features drink stops, photos, prizes, and a finale party, all benefiting United Way of Parker County. And mark your calendars for Saturday, December 6th, and get ready to enjoy some holiday cheer in historic downtown Weatherford. Christmas on the Square brings local shopping, festive food, and fun for the whole family, including kids' activities that'll keep even the tiniest elves busy. The night wraps up with the award-winning Weatherford Lights the Night Parade at 6:30 p.m. Don't miss the magic. And while you're downtown on Saturday, head on over to Peacock's Cowboy Santa is saddling up for Christmas on the tracks. Stop by Peacock's feed from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for photos with Cowboy Santa, train rides, kids' activities, and llamas in Christmas outfits. There will be vendors for grownups, fun for kids, and plenty of holiday cheer. Proceed to support local nonprofits so you can feel good while you're laughing at the llamas in a Santa hat. And then the Candlelight Tour of Homes returns on December 13th from 9:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. You can tour five beautifully decorated homes, plus All Saints Anglican Church, Mount Pleasant School, Shandor Gardens, and the Doss Heritage Log Cabin. Tickets are available at The Chamber, Doss Heritage, and online at ParkerCountyHeritageSociety.com. For more information on these and other events, visit ExperienceWeatherford.com, your one-stop shop for holly, jolly happenings.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Council item number 5A, consider approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on November 18th, 2025.
Sorry about that. I was having problems with my screen.
You're okay. No worries. All right. Motion by Heidi Wilder, second by Luke Williams. And that vote passes. We'll move to regular agenda items at this time. 6A, consider a request for a facade improvement grant for 203 North Main Street in an amount not to exceed $13,392.50. Ms. Ashley Siler.
Good evening, Council. Ashley Siler, Director of Economic Development. Today, there's a consideration for a total of five facade grants. The total of each of those before you equates to $166,838.66. The city has historically budgeted $200,000 for these facade programs. Specifically for 203 North Main, that building has sat vacant for years. The applicant began to restore the interior of the building, transforming it to what will be the Weatherford Market Place. This flexible office space offers a podcast room, two rentable conference rooms, 22 -- let me catch up here -- 22 rentable office spaces, and much more. The membership-based space offers 24-hour access and flexibility to rent the office spaces as needed. The interior is currently undergoing a renovation at a cost in excess of $500,000. The planned repairs for the front of this building include the restoration of windows, installation of permanent lighting, widening of the existing doors, and repairs of the drainage system. Staff did see that the lights had been installed, but was made aware that they were just testing the sockets, and it was not the permanent lighting. Other work that has been completed on the exterior facade was not included in the scope of the grant request, as the policy states that the work should be completed after council approval. This property also has a unique rear facade that faces York Avenue. The staff report combined these two facades, as the policy reviews opportunities by address and not by each individual side of the building. Having the benefit of two entrances on two prominent streets, being that Main and York, gives this building a unique opportunity. Given that, the applicant would like to create a venue to connect and collaborate. The yard on York is set to have occasional live music, food trucks, and comfortable outdoor seating. This proposal included adding a new roof to match the existing roof line, removing the noncompliant handicap area, and replacing the current door with double doors. Additional improvements include insulation of the gutters, two insulated glass garage-style doors, and concrete pads for food trucks with fencing, and the addition of board and batten siding with rock wainscoting. The applicant is the property owner himself and did receive three quotes. He predicated his numbers based off the quote from PDR Construction and is requesting $101,823.50 for both facades. That number is derived from the construction budget of York Avenue initially being pared down from $198,462 to $176,862, as the estimate did include a few items that were not listed in the policy as eligible improvements. Those were cabinets and patio furniture. That did remove $21,600 off the top, leaving us with $176,862. The front of the building had a construction budget of $36,785. Therefore, that $101,823.50 comes from adding the $176,862 and $36,785, subtracting that initial $10,000 investment by the applicant, and dividing it by two for our up-to-a-50% match. The Weatherford Economic Development Board chose to recommend a grant towards the front of the building only in the amount of $13,392.50. Again, that amount is derived from the construction cost of $36,785, less the $10,000 initial investment, divided by two. With that, I'm here for any questions, and a representative of the owner is also here.
Just briefly, before we get into discussion, we currently don't have any speaker cards on any of these items, so if you would like to stay up to answer questions and then continue to the next item versus coming back and forth, you can.
I'll be here all night.
Okay. All right. Just wanted you to know you could do that. Counsel, you got any questions for staff?
Do have quite a few. When I looked at this, I noticed that it's -- when it was provided to me, I noticed that it was two different applications.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed you said that you combined it because it's a one address. But I know in the past, and I'm going to use Cotton Bratton as a example, I know that that had different addresses, and those applications were separated.
Yes.
For different times. Why was this one not separated? Because when I went through my packet, the packet I received from the applicant versus the packet that was provided to the board to review didn't have all of the actual documentation that showed the marketability, I guess, of the project. So is that -- am I -- did I miss something somewhere along the way that was a requirement? Did I, you know, did I -- what did I miss that I don't understand? Because to me, this should have been two applications and two different requests because they're in different areas. They're on even different streets.
Yes, ma'am. That's a good question. So the policy does state that it will be seen as one specific address. So the Cotton Bratton in your example had two different applications because there were two different addresses. This building has one address. When the applicant did submit their paperwork, they submitted it as two. However, that's just not how we see it. Either way, the WEDA board provided the recommendation of the front facade only, which is why you got what you got in your packet.
Can you provide me additional information with regard to when I -- and again, I may be the only one who understands it this way, so if -- I'd like for y'all to pitch in and
Go ahead.
You know, correct me where I'm wrong. But as I understand, the reason we're doing this is for the public and for marketing the shops and entertainment, and for citizens to come in, shop, and do whatever they wish to do, you know. My understanding from this place, and you can correct me where I'm wrong, from the application, my understanding from this place is it is going to be open to the public. I can, as a citizen, go in, rent a meeting room, because maybe I want to add a bunch of people that I can't -- I don't want them in my home or something, because I work from home. So I can go in there and I can rent a room. I can video conference. It's going to have Wi-Fi. It's going to be totally tech-created. As a just general average citizen, I can come in there and rent a room. I can also get a membership with them and be able to come in and use the Wi-Fi, use whatever I need to use, and do my thing.
Yes.
But I also understand the other application for the other portion of -- that's just for the front, where, you know, you come in and you do all that. But the application for the other section is for entertainment purposes. It's for live bands getting up there, for food trucks being there, so that, you know, if my family who loves to shop, and I do not, I can sit there and have a taco and a unsweetened iced tea, and my family can go shop to their heart's desire, and I can sit down and just chill. So is -- if we were to look at this recommendation, and I think it's a very viable project because it's going to bring people in, it's going to bring shoppers in, it's going to bring tourists in, and then I don't think it -- one person said it might detract from restaurants. I don't think that's going to be the case, because this is going to be entirely different clientele. This is going to be a clientele that are out there shopping, may want to stop off and get a drink, may want to stop off and get a taco or a whatever food truck is in there, a barbecue sandwich or something, and then go on about themselves shopping. So I guess I am for the project as a whole, because I see it two different ways. I see the public being able to go in and conduct business and have a membership that they can use the technology. I don't know what a podcast room is, but I know a lot of people do it. So, especially young people. So all the young people can go podcast themselves to death. But the average, you know, kid can go in and do it. And then, you know, it's going to create people coming in every single day for something new, something different, you know. So I see both of these as kind of separate pieces that do really highlight what we're trying to do, which is make downtown a place where we want to go, where a lot of people want to come, tourists want to come, they want to shop, they want to maybe not shop, but some may want to sit down and have an unsweetened iced tea while the rest of their family shops, and just give them their credit card. And so I am in favor of allowing the full amount for this project, minus the $10,000 divided by two.
Ms. Siler, could you tell us that amount? Just for the record again.
Yes.
It was pretty lengthy earlier. I'm sorry.
Yes. So with the North Main and the York Avenue facade grant requests combined, that total is $101,823.50.
And that would be minus $10,000.
Yeah. And just to clarify, the other grants that were recommended by WEDA that are included as part of the agenda tonight, what is the total of all those? And what would that full amount, if they decided to do something different, what would that full amount equal?
With that full amount, it would be $255,269.66, should all be approved by the council tonight.
Minus the $10,000 divided by two.
No, ma'am.
Including that.
Yep, including that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So as presented, correct me if I'm wrong, as originally presented in these agenda items, there was only a difference of about $44,000 left over coming to council from WEDA board off the $200,000 mark that was earmarked for facade grants. Is that correct, or am I incorrect in that?
The total remaining?
Yes.
I think it's about 43 and some change.
Okay.
166,000, right?
Yeah.
Okay. 43. Okay. Understood.
Your math is bad.
Yeah, bad math. Bad math.
It's like you're trying to run a meeting up here. I can speak a little bit on this one. I will note that this property specifically, at least as part of the facade improvement grants or requests that have come forward on their own, it's different in the sense that this building does have a front facing on both streets. You've got North Main, and then you've got the back portion there. The difference in that and the way that it came forward, and what the WEDA board essentially approved, was for the North Main portion. And there has been some work completed on it, and we discussed the implications of that. It does say in the application that work is not to be completed. We're cognizant of that, and we approved that aspect of it. A piece to this overall project, which Councilwoman Wilder, you mentioned, you love the idea. I love the idea, too. I think it is, it's going to bring people together, it's going to increase the foot traffic downtown, everything else like that. It works in its own. But if you think about it from an actual operational piece, and the way maybe we received some more information, you provided some clarity as to what specifically were going to happen, and what you said, was that it was almost more of a speculative office space, whereas, you know, not to confuse other items, but each of the other items, or speak about other items, have a set tenant that's going to occupy these spaces, that will be operating out of these facilities, whereas this one was more a come-and-go community space. I was comfortable and felt comfortable, and I made the motion at the WEDA board to proceed with just the front portion for the time being. And that was approved and voted upon by then. I'm not sure if a motion was made or not. I will say that at this time, all that I would be comfortable approving would be what was approved by the WEDA board. I would want, if that was to be increased, I would like for this to go back before them to have further discussion, maybe with additional information or whatnot. But I would not look at entertaining the full amount, especially being that we've also just identified that the total amount earmarked is $200,000, and if we did approve the full amount, we would be over that by approximately
$55,260.
Over that difference. So that is my comment, not necessarily making a motion at this time in case there's additional points. Just speaking my piece.
I did have one -- I just want to clarify one thing you said, because you spoke pretty fast.
Yeah. I apologize.
Not as fast as Ms. Siler.
Well, no, no one speaks as fast as you do. So since I wasn't there, but I did listen, so this was joined as one, and to me, it really is two pieces, because the facade program was to increase the marketability of what people see on the street.
I agree.
And so to me, this, whether you say it has two addresses, or technically yes or no, it's still facade because it's two different streets to me. So that's what you're saying as well, that is that
I can recognize that it's two different streets. As what I was saying for what we were considering tonight, $13,392.50 was approved by the WEDA board and sent our direction. That would be all that I would be comfortable looking at. If another application came back again separately for the back half that went through the appropriate measures to go into the WEDA board to understand that concept a little bit more, maybe with additional details that they had, and that was approved there that then came forward to us, I would consider doing the whole thing. But as is my preference or a motion that I could support, would only be looking at $13,000 tonight.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I do have one question. You know, having sat on the WEDA board, I know that we had had discussion there about this particular address did kind of go against our policy, and we were okay with that, and we accepted that at the WEDA board of saying some work had been done. We had thought at the time it was some paint. Since then, it has become some light fixtures. There's three light fixtures up. And so with that said, I know that these get the permit fees waived, but they still have a permit process, right? Do we know if the applicant has turned in a permit to get any of this work done at this time?
I will have to check on that.
Understood. I'm sorry.
See, I -- that was not the information I had. The information I had is they had fixtures up, but only to test the electrical system. Those are going to come back down, and those pretty lights are going to come up.
And the applicant did confirm that with me today, and I said that in
They have not proceeded. What they were doing was testing those, where the circuits are, do they need to remove the circuits, do they need to move them? That's what they were trying to test, to see where they needed the lights to shine the best. They have not -- my understanding was they have not started that construction.
Okay. Understood. Just so they're clear, we definitely, even though the fees are waived, we still require going through the permit office, through the permit process.
Yes, sir.
Understood. Okay. I'd entertain a motion at this time. Go ahead.
Well, I wanted -- do you -- I guess my question to you would be is, do we have the authority, one, I guess this is a Rob question, do we have the authority to send something back? We don't normally do that, but do we have the ability to send something back?
You could make an amended motion and put in there whatever she'd like, right?
Yeah, I think you do have the authority to, if you chose to do what's being suggested, to send something back to the WEDA board for their reconsideration of that portion of the item. That's what you're asking?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, you don't have to, but I think you have that, the council, I think, has that authority.
And you -- I guess you're the person I would ask at this point, because there's so few of us. Would you have a problem approving the entire amount at this point?
I think you would just need to make a motion. Is that right? Whatever.
Yeah. The Mayor Pro-Tim is -- he, in running the meeting, still has the right to make a motion and vote, so I think you can express your -- you can express your thoughts on that if you want to, or you can just request that a motion.
Understood. But my thoughts would be, I'm in agreement with exactly what has been done at the WEDA board at this time. If they want to come back with another opportunity, an additional facade improvement grant, that additional one would come before WEDA, is the way that I see it. However, the budget, if all goes as written tonight, and we don't make any changes to any of these others, there's $44,000 left in this year's budget. Or 43, as pointed out earlier.
I'm still going to make a motion to approve the entire thing.
Understood. Would you mind giving her that number, and would you mind stating that in your motion, please?
The number is $101,823.50.
And that includes the 13?
Yes, ma'am.
Say that again. I make a motion for the number of Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. I appreciate you doing that. Okay. Motion fails to have a second, therefore we need to continue discussion and to resolve the matter.
That's correct. With that in consideration, I don't know what needs to happen here. There appears to
We can discuss some more, or we can make another motion.
I would make a motion that we approve what was presented by the WEDA board in the amount of $13,392.50. Again, with the statement of if an additional application was filed and brought before the WEDA board with the additional information, and it allowed them to have an additional time to vote on the separate second facade improvement grant on the backside of the property, it can be reconsidered, and I would see that come forward again. But at this time, I would make a motion for only what is presented on 6A, for $13,392.50.
Understood. All right. A motion's been made by Councilmember Luke Williams, with suggested action as presented, seconded by myself, and let's take a vote. Motion unanimously carries. Thank you. Item number 6B, consider a request for a facade improvement grant for 209 North Main Street in an amount not to exceed $22,227. Ms. Ashley Siler.
H&amp;Co Design House is a full-service interior design firm founded by Heather Arnold. Will occupy 209 North Main Street in downtown Weatherford. H&amp;Co Design House is a local franchise of decorating den interiors and serves the greater DFW area, including Weatherford, offering custom window treatments, luxury furnishings, bedding, and more. With this new location, the business will provide a design studio and showroom in the heart of the historic downtown. heart of the historic downtown, employing two or three people. Planned improvements include replacing deteriorated wood trim around the second store, second story windows, repainting the entire exterior with a refreshed and historically appropriate color palette, and removing and replacing the canopy. The applicant is the property owner himself. He is excited to invest into Weatherford and did receive three bids. They are requesting twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars based on the Wolf Construction quote, which was fifty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. After subtracting that initial ten thousand dollar investment and dividing it by two, we derived at twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which was recommended by the Weatherford Economic Development Board. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
I'm excited.
I agree. This is a good-looking project, good investment, and with that, I will second your motion for approval.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Heidi Wilder, seconded by Councilmember Luke Williams. Let's take a vote. And motion unanimously carries. Congratulations, the applicant. Item number six C, consider a request for a facade improvement grant for three one one North Main Street in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. Ms. Ashley Siler.
Three eleven North Main was most recently used as an antique marketplace. This developer is working to convert the property from a retail format to a professional office space by bringing in Baird Hampton &amp; Brown, which is a well-established civil engineering firm with a strong presence across the entire DFW metroplex. BHB currently operates out of a smaller office in Weatherford, but is seeking to grow in the Weatherford area to downtown for a larger, more central location to grow their workforce. They currently employ twenty-two people locally, but plan to grow to twenty-five and even upwards of thirty people within the next three years. Main Street will be making substantial improvements to this building, including exterior parking lot and building interior improvements. The work related to the facade grant program is refurbished paint over the brick in the Main Street entrance, paint of the building exterior visible from both Main Street and York Avenue, removing and replacing the existing canopies on the property, removal of trees and fencing as necessary, installing a new building entry frame and door, including the necessary lighting for all entryways, installing new glass windows, and installing new address signage over the Main Street entrance. Main Street Partners is the applicant and property owner, and they anticipate spending roughly now upward of nine hundred thousand dollars, which is an increase from eight hundred thousand dollars as presented at the Weta Board meeting, in total improvements for this property. The additional cost will be spent by the tenants as well for the interior finish outs of the space. The facade-related costs are anticipated to be a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Main Street is seeking a grant in the amount of eighty-four thousand, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars, which the Weatherford Economic Development Board is also recommending tonight for your consideration. With that, the applicant did receive three bids, and there is a representative here. If you have any questions, I am here as well.
Great.
I do have a couple of questions, but also a comment. Well, first of all, I want to know how the board sees this as, I think the project is wonderful. I'm super duper excited about it. However, I don't think this qualifies in the facade program. And the reason is, we're spending public dollars so the public can go in and bring, go in and do whatever they do, that's not going to bring foot traffic. It's not going to bring people to other shops to see. It has benefits the general public, it does not. If you're going to this firm, you're going for a specific reason. You're not going to go there to mill around and shop. You're not going to go there to look through the glass doors to see what you got. This is, this does not qualify for this facade program. Do not misunderstand me. I am super duper excited about it. It just does not meet the criteria, in my opinion, for the, for the facade program.
Here's what I would submit to you that it does do. It brings local foot traffic to include these twenty-five employees growing to thirty employees into our downtown area, which hopefully will shop at those retail spaces and eat at our local restaurants in the downtown on a more frequent basis.
I don't think that, you know, employees, one, if they have the time, I mean, you're just talking about people every day, year after year. I'm talking about new people coming in. I'm talking about people milling around and staying, seeing multiple shops. These people are there to work. They're going to get their lunch hour, yes, but they're there to work, and they're not going to bring, I'm not going to bring my grandma to come and look at this beautiful quilt, or I'm not going to bring my grandma to come look at this beautiful furniture piece. This, to me, just, those are the same people. I'm excited about the project. I just don't think it, it, it doesn't promote marketability, and if I'm going to bring, spend citizens' dollars, it needs to be for the citizen, the average citizen in the city of Weatherford.
Councilwoman Williams?
The piece that I would say to that, though, is, I mean, it is improving, making improvements with significant improvement from the owner of the property into the building on both sides. My, my comment that I was going to make, Ms. Siler made already, is you do have twenty-five-plus daily employees, you do have meetings with, with other individuals. Did you mention the applicant is here, or someone?
Yes, sir.
Could I verify if there is going to be a meeting space in this, in, at this location? Is there typically meetings that are held there?
Sir, before you, if you don't mind, to give your name and address for the record, and then you can make a comment.
Thank you. My name is Mitchell Parker. I'm with Main Street Partners. Our, our address is in Weatherford, is three eleven North Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. To answer your question directly, you asked, is there going to be meeting space?
Yeah, is there a meeting space that would generate, obviously?
Yes, so there will be conference rooms in this space. In terms of meetings to be held, I mean, they'll have offices for themselves as well, but there will be additional meeting space. They would intend to have clientele that comes to the office to meet with them on a regular basis. If you'll allow me, just a few comments to address some of the things that were said here today, I'd be happy to...
All right.
To share our, our thoughts on the space. One, from a perspective of facade specifically, because I know that's your concern, I, I think we're doing a substantial amount of improvement to the building. I, I don't want to compare it to the other projects, but to the point you made, this building has the most visibility of all the facade work on all the applications coming forward today. It faces both Main Street and York Avenue, as well as the side of the building is visible. So, there, it has the most actual facade related to any of the projects today, and the current condition is, is, you know, has not been kept up. So, from a pure, pure facade aesthetic perspective, this will become one of the premier office buildings in downtown Weatherford, which will improve the look and be a much more inviting thing to pass by, spend time around in your downtown, and I think spurs future development with the quality that will be seen here. That's our hope, at least. Additionally, I don't know if the economic data that I provided with our application was something that you had an opportunity to see, but speaking specifically to the economic impact that having daily traffic in your downtown area through office employees creates, I did a bit of research into this. Your local shops, it's very difficult to get enough support from foot traffic only from people coming into downtown from outside of downtown. It's a vital part of it. Your nights and weekends, traffic is super important, but the sustaining thing that allows businesses to thrive in a downtown market is daily traffic, and that daily traffic in a downtown specifically is only provided by a thriving office market. In the packet, I included economic research that's done on the spend of office workers within a mile radius of where they work. The sales tax, which is not a lot, that comes back to the city, but the sales tax alone, combined with the property tax increases, if you just took the amount of money, the existing property tax value, plus just the amount of money that we're spending on the project combined, between the increase to property tax and the sales tax, that would be coming back to the city, just based on the average economic spend of office workers over the lifespan of this lease, would fully recoup what's being spent by the city. And that's not accounting what we would hope is additional development spurred by this being a catalyst of, look at what can be possible in Weatherford. We think Weatherford has an underserved office market, especially at the higher quality end, and we think this, this office will go a long way to help serve that market and provide a catalyst for additional development to be done in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
While, while you're here, just to clarify, you represent the owner, you represent as the owner?
Main Street Partners is, is the owner of the, I mean, I think technically, there's a special purpose entity that purchased it, but Main Street Partners is the operating partner of that entity.
And then Baird Hampton &amp; Brown, who we have the signed lease from, is your tenant?
Yes, sir. They are the tenant for seventy-six hundred square feet. We have an additional four hundred square feet, which will become available for lease. I think we're planning to list it next week. That may be a retail use, although four hundred square feet is pretty small. We think it's a perfect opportunity for a small market. CPA, real estate agent, somebody who's looking for small office space who maybe works from home primarily, but wants to basically go meet clients at an affordable rate, and we think that, that's probably a use there, but we've also had some interest from small coffee shops, smoothies, things like that, that are mainly to-go based.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
No, I just, one point that I would say is, in looking at the data, some of the data doesn't correlate to our population, I would say, because you're look, you're looking at average data, so some of the data, I just didn't see the same correlation. I don't disagree that we need this. I don't disagree that this isn't a wonderful, wonderful project. I just, if you're going to spend citizens' money, it needs to directly impact the citizen. And to me, you know, someone that's there all the time is not going to be the same as if you have a, I'm just going to take the first two we have in here, or, or any restaurant that we have, different people coming in for lunch, or different people coming in for shopping for furniture, or coming in to do a podcast or whatever. It's going to be continuously, and grow. Twenty-five people is going to stay twenty-five people. This has the potential to sit there and grow to, I'm bringing my brother, I'm bringing my cousin, whatever. I'm just saying, if I'm going to spend citizens' dollars, it needs to directly impact the citizen.
Understood. You know, a couple of comments, just briefly. One being just clearly the, the facade improvement itself, not necessarily the grant, but just the improvement. What an improvement, right? A nine hundred thousand dollar commitment to improving their building, which will increase ad valorem tax significantly for that property, which is where we'll recruit the majority of it, right? But, but still, to your point, one thing I noticed that this tenant, or this applicant did, rather, that I haven't seen in the past, was they put in there their contract with their tenant, which committed to seven years. And since I've been on this council, we have approved a bunch of facade improvement grants that are no longer in business, and I've only been here three years. And so, to have a seven-year commitment from their, from their tenant is, is, that's impressive, and I appreciate him putting it in there.
To build off of that, just because I had noticed the same thing, that's a seven-year commitment with, with two five-year options to renew after that, so seventeen potential years that are under contract for that tenant of twenty-five-plus employees. Just, you stole my, I was going to make that point myself, so I'm glad you did.
Understood.
You two think a lot alike.
Oh, boy. Poor Luke. Any, any additional comments, council, staff?
Just one thing to clarify, that, to Councilwoman Wilder's point, only exterior improvements are considered, obviously, with the facade grant, and the, the policy as it's developed and has been considered by council and has been deployed, has really just been throughout, when you look at the history of downtown, just a lack of investment that's been made by some of those property owners. So, it was meant to encourage those, they're all legal uses, that, that, obviously, the city attorney has reviewed and determined they're all appropriate uses on those and been brought forward, so the legality of those, it's completely legal to use those dollars for those uses that are being done, and it's actually worked out really well. I mean, we've seen substantial improvement on North Main, where it's been used, we've seen a few on South Main, where for those, several on York Street that have been done, and even the ones that are, that are considered tonight would make substantial improvement to the, to the downtown area, which is, which is really cool, right? Because you go back to, there was an investment being made, so it's really, it's really been successful from a standpoint, so...
I think that, that whether this is approved or not approved, they're going to go forward, and it's going to be amazing, and I, I'm really looking forward to it. I just, my heart says, and, and my head says, that the average citizen, I have to do what I feel like the average, is going to benefit the average citizen and is going to grow in marketability, because this project's going to go forward, yes or no. I mean, it, it doesn't hinge on this. It, it's going to be beautiful and, and amazing, and we're going to be so happy that it's there.
Ms. Siler, would you mind if we bring the applicant up one more time?
I just, to address, I don't need to repeat name and everything.
We already have...
Heidi.
Ms. Heidi, we've actually spoken on the phone several times about property that you have in Fort Worth, but it's nice to meet you in person here tonight. I, I do, I do agree that this prob, this project's going to go forward. We own the building, we've signed a lease, it's going to go forward, but I can tell you one hundred percent that the beautiful facade that you see in the packet tonight will not happen without this grant. Our original budget has increased by over a hundred thousand dollars. We've committed to, it's roughly nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars total going into this building at this point, and we have investors who, you know, trust us to do right with, with their investment, and we will have to scale back the quality of the exterior if we're not able to get this grant. This grant is not something that we're just hoping to juice our returns with, to deliver the quality level of project that we want to do, because we, we don't want this to be our only project in Weatherford. We see this as a first step to doing more redevelopment in downtown. But to deliver the quality level that we want to do with all of our projects, this grant is a vital factor for us. We will one hundred percent have to scale back on some of the design pieces to make it more feasible if we're not able to get this grant. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you, sir. All right. With that, any other comments or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve six C as presented, in the amount of eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars.
Motion on the table by Councilmember Luke Williams. Understood. I'll second that motion, and we'll take a vote. And the motion carries. Item number six D, consider a request for a facade improvement grant for one one eight College Avenue in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents. Ms. Ashley Siler.
This property has been abandoned since the mid nineteen seventies and needs extensive renovation, but it's ready to be brought back to life with Grass stains Boutique. This boutique is a women's fashion retailer that was originally opened by Dawn Phillips in twenty-twelve in Graham, Texas. In twenty-nineteen, she and her sister opened their second location in College Station. Dawn is excited to come to Weatherford and expects this location to gross between three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The building will be stripped to bare rock shell and will receive new plumbing, new gas lines, new electrical, stud walls, sheet rock, HVAC, et cetera. Relating to the facade grant, the renovations that fit that scope include removal of the existing metal awning, demo of the old women, windows, and installation of the new, the new windows, lastly, the facade to cover that stucco. While the renovations are extensive, the construction is expected to go quickly and could be open for business by February of twenty-twenty-six. The owner is investing between eighty to ninety thousand dollars, and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents is applicable for the facade program itself. Subtracting that initial ten thousand dollar investment and dividing it by two gives us the thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents, which was recommended... which was recommended to you by the Weatherford Economic Development Board. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
Well, me personally, I'm super excited about this. I want to be one of the first people in, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Better you the first person in than my wife.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion that's been made by Heidi Wilder as presented, seconded by Councilmember Luke Williams. We'll take a vote. And the motion passes. Congratulations to that applicant. Item number 6E, consider a request for a facade improvement grant for 122 York Avenue in an amount not to exceed $31,525, Ms. Ashley Siler.
Last facade grant of the night. Yesterday's sandwich shop is a beloved local eatery with 25 years of service and a decade-long record as Parker County's best sandwich shop. They are proposing a targeted renovation of its storefront. The applicant would like to create a more inviting, modern facade that reinforces the shop's brand, drives foot traffic, and supports continued growth while preserving historic, intimate character of the building. The grant request includes the replacement of the glass in the upper transom windows, the two large windows, and the side panels by the door. Additional proposed improvements include the installation of the new double door, scraping and sanding of all the wood to remove the previous layers of the paint, painting of both brick and woodwork interior and exterior of the facade, and the installation of the new awning. The applicant is the property owner, and she did receive three quotes. She predicated her number based off the quote from the Jack-of-all-trades construction, which came in in the middle of the road for the cost estimates. There was an inconsistency with the amount listed on the initial application and the construction budget as this application first came forward in FY '25. Therefore, the construction budget was $73,050, leaving $31,525 that was submitted in the staff notes. However, the Weatherford Economic Development Board and staff recommended using the updated construction budget for fiscal year 2026, which is $77,050. When subtracting the $10,000 initial investment and dividing it by two, $33,525 was recommended. The applicant did provide an updated application reflecting the corrected construction budget. Therefore, I and the Weatherford Economic Development Board do recommend the $33,525. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Council, any questions?
Other than maybe, are they going to keep the oak front? Know that? Go back to the picture. Yeah, are they going to keep like the wood that's around all of that? They're just going to repaint it?
They're just going to repaint it, yes, ma'am.
Completely unrelated to the, I don't know how long it's been since you've been into yesterday's, but unrelated to the facade, they've done some work indoors as well with the same contractor, and it looks phenomenal. Very, very good. So I'm excited for this. Be good.
With that, I'm going to make a motion to.
Oh, no, no.
Never mind.
I already punched.
You can make a second to the.
Understood. I'm sorry, I didn't see that there. I will second your motion, assuming that is.
For $33,525 for the updated figure.
This is the updated figure in this presentation, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, understood. So yours is actually for $31,525.
No, the $33,000.
No, she said $33,525.
$33,000.
Yes.
Five.
$33,525.
My apologies, and thank you for pointing that out. I'll make a note of that. Okay. Motion that's been made by Ms. Heidi Wilder in the amount of $33,525.
Yes, sir.
And a second by Councilmember Luke Williams. We'll take a vote on it. Thank you for correcting that. And the motion carries. This is the one we've been looking for. Item number 6F, consider approval of the Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement between the City of Weatherford and Mike Barcott.
Barcott?
Barcott. Understood. Ms. Ashley Siler.
This is a request to extend utilities, water, wastewater, and electric to 2538 South Main Street for a Buttermilk Sky Pie location. This area has been ripe for growth for quite some time, as it sits right off of South Main and Beebe Fielder across from Chick-fil-A. The location itself, the little pie slice, no pun intended, is surrounded by a few other parcels, which, as we had stated tonight, development spurs development. This is a small investment of roughly $100,000 for a much larger capital investment by the developer and some of the other parcels. The design and construction will be handled in-house by Weatherford employees, and with that, I'm here for any questions.
I like that you challenged Ms. Spicer with the pun. That was good.
That's right.
It was good. Any questions, council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Understood.
I will second.
Motion for approval as presented by Ms. Heidi Wilder, seconded by Mr. Luke Williams, and we'll take a vote. And the motion passes. Item number seven is future agenda items. Council and staff, do we have any future agenda items we'd like to put on?
Just a reminder, our meeting schedule shifted a little bit because of the Christmas schedule, so we're usually the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Our next meeting, though, will be moved to December 16th.
Understood. Thank you. Council, with your permission, I would like to move item number 10, citizens' comments on non-agenda items, up before our executive session. And we do have a blue speaker card. Ms. Amy Fennel, if you don't mind, please, coming up. Just for the record, state your name and address.
My name's Amy Fennel, and I'm running for Texas State House of Representatives to represent Parker, Palopinto, and Stevens Counties. And I'm here to express my appreciation and support for local governments. Little background on myself, I'm a wife, mother, grandmother, business owner, and a 12-year resident of Parker County who never dreamed I'd be involved in politics until the city of Woolly Park tried to sneak in a wastewater treatment plant at the bottom of my hill. There's really not a bigger motivator than that. So this is in 2016, and I got involved, and for $1,250 in donations, I won a seat on the council in 2017, and I served from 2017 to 2020. And on my last day, on my last council meeting, we approved purchase of property right next door to the current location, keeping it right over there. So for $1,250, I participated in local government and was able to have an impact on my home. During my time on council, I saw behind the smoke and mirrors, behind the curtain, where the state is working to take away our right to self-governance. There's more and more control being taken away, and local government is the last line of defense against big government. I stepped up to run in this race because our current representative, Mike Alcott, had made some votes, voted for some measures that take away local control. The two that concern me the most with cities is there was SB 15, which prohibits cities from requiring a minimum lot size, and Alcott voted for that. And it was done under the guise of making housing more affordable. The other bill that's of concern, SB 840, I believe, it prohibits a city from determining, from having authority on zoning over existing property, office space. So in a city, if there's an empty office building and the owner wants to change it to multifamily housing, they don't have to go through the zoning. They don't have to do any of the impact studies, none of that. The owner gets to rezone it without council approval. That is taking away a city's right to steer your own ship and to chart your own path, and that's not conservative government. And just to express to you, that's the reason I'm running, because I believe in local government, and I believe that a person should be able to get $1,250 in donations and be able to make a difference on their community. Thank you for what y'all do. I appreciate it. I've been there. I know how hard it is.
Thank you for time, Ms. Fennel, and thank you for being here at our meeting today. Any other item, citizen comments on non-agenda items at this time, welcome to come up. Hearing done, we'll move into item number eight, which is executive session items. Item 8A, Section 551, 074 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear, to, to hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee, associate municipal court judge. We'll be hearing this in executive session, and we'll recess at 7:00.